This time I call the July meeting of the County Commission to order. We have a good friend, Lincoln County fellow, to get proud of. I asked Commissioner Clyde if he would introduce our preacher.
He's a good Lincoln County and also most people know of him and does a wonderful job for us at Calhoun Baptist West Corner. So Wes, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay, Reverend Goff, if you'll come to the podium following the prayer. We'll have pleasure to lead us through American flag, Commissioner Collins. Stand, please.
Let's pray. Almighty God, as we gather in this place for the business at hand, to consider the affairs of our county, we thank you that your spirit and your presence is with us. We ask God that you would guide and lead our thoughts. You would be with our elected officials. Father, would you give them great wisdom and discernment as they make decisions that will impact not only us but generations to come? Father, thank you for those that provide for us order and stability and help with justice. God pray that you give great insight to them as they seek to do that. I would pray that you would help us to be honorable in our dealings with one another, help us to be respectful and right and good, and give us great wisdom in these endeavors in Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, and in the bill with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. I assume that they've all been read and understood, and I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number five is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Departmental reports. Item six A is the Office of Emergency Services Director Brun.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to be here. You have my submitted reports? Do you have any questions?
You would get in that microphone, but there you go.
Chairman and Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be here. I'll turn on my baritone, boy. You have my submitted reports. If there are any questions, I'll certainly answer those for you as best I can.
Any questions, Director Brun?
I got them.
Mr. Tankersley?
How are we coming down on two twenty? Station eleven.
We're progressing at a pace that I think we wish we could go a little bit faster. I think the chairman can brief you further on some of the things that are maybe holding us up a little bit on that, but it's nearly ready.
Mr. Tankersley, we have found out if there's any way possible, we don't want to build anything else on the state highway. Stay on the county roads where we can say what we want to do. We don't have much say so for them. Any other questions, Director Brun? Thank you. Before I move to the Recreation Department, I should have done this at the beginning, and I overlooked it, but I always like to recognize a former county commissioner. Commissioner Virginia Williams, Representative District One, and she's sitting back here. Always good to have you and good to see you, Commissioner. Thank you for coming. All right, Director Gleese, the Recreation Department.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. You have my written report in front of you. Do we have any questions?
All right, you got his report. Any questions to him? I notice we got some. Family Camp's about to be over, and forty-four strong will be on September the fifth, and soccer registration is scheduled in Wednesday, July the twelfth.
But I'm still willing to take it through tomorrow for those that possibly forgot. Right now, we have a hundred and twenty-five kids.
That's good. Okay, any questions? Thank you, Director Gleese, and I think you're not back on even. You want to leave, you can do that, too. Item six C is the Financial Report. Director Doss, as you can see, is not here. He's out of town, but you have his report in your book. If you have any questions, just get in touch with him. Dee is the Public Works Director, or who will be anyway in just a few minutes. Hopefully. Can't I have tickets? Go to it. Okay, Director Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me here this evening. Their various reports that's been submitted to you for your review, I will answer your questions the best I can with the knowledge I have.
Any questions to you? Thank you, sir. Seven, item seven is our Public Hearing portion to handle planning and zoning reports. Is there a motion that we go into our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We are in our public hearing. It looks as if things can go pretty good, because I don't see a whole lot of people here that would be in opposition, which sometimes we have big crowds, sometimes we don't. The next one in item A is Gregory and Colleen Lang, map thirty-six, partial zero-one-eight, twenty-two-thirty Elberton Highway, and they are wanting to change it from a C-one back to a A-one. Is anybody here with, is Mr. Lang or Ms. Lang, either one here? Ms. Lang, would you like to have anything? Before you do that, let me back up. Is there anybody here that's opposed to this change? Anybody's opposed to going from C-one to R-one?
A-one.
A-one. A-one. It's not. Okay, Ms. Lang, would you like to address the commission or not? If you do, we got to come to the podium. If you don't, okay. All right, y'all have got the information. You're familiar with the package. The Planning and Zoning Board has recommended approval from the, about to go back to an A-one agricultural district for a hobby farm. Okay, we'll take that back up in a minute. Now we're going to, Chair, you fix, get on to it. We're going to seven B. The applicant is James and Kimberly Brown, map zero-five, partial zero-three-nine and zero-forty-two Buckhead Point Road, thirty-five point seven acres and a thirteen point two acres. They're asking for rezoning from R-two to A-three. Am I correct?
A-two.
A-two is not right. That's got to be corrected in your book.
A-three.
It's going, it's going from, from agricultural. It's going, it's going to, it's going from R-two, I believe. R-one, I think it's R-two. Yeah, it is. I'm looking at it. R-two zoning district. They're requesting a agricultural district, so they're wanting to go from residential back to agriculture, and we said, Planning Commission said, A-three, not A-two.
A-three.
Which A-three says there's no mobile homes can be put there. A-two will allow it. R-one, R-two, so, but change that in your book. This will be an R-three.
A-three.
A-three.
Or R-two, yeah.
Boy, I'm trying to keep that residential. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak against the commission voting to change these two fossils properly? From a residential to an agricultural? A, A, R-two to A-three? Anyone here that's opposed to it? Okay, it's not. It's there. Anyone here that would like to speak for it? I'm assuming y'all are Mr. and Ms. Brown. Am I correct? Mr. Brown, would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. Okay, the recommendation from the Planning Commission is the approval to an A, R-three, A-three zone. Boy, it just looks like I don't know what we're doing. I spent a lot of time on this one. Even drove up there.
What do you mean, "we"?
Me. In other words, I should have put "him" there instead of "that". Anyway, we got it right now. We're going from a residential to an agricultural three-zone. All right, nobody here. Well, let's have a motion to come out of our public hearing. That's second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and we are out of our public hearing. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission for Gregory and Colleen Lang from a C-one to an A-one?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and I knew you bought Fredo Place up there. Is that correct? I want you to notice, though, that Commissioner Henderson is your commission in that district up there, and he jumped out there real quick to make that motion. Okay, the next one is Mr. and Ms. Brown, map zero-five, partial thirty-nine and forty-two. That's the two. Changing from a R-two zone to an R-three zone.
A-three.
A-three. I don't know why I keep saying that. We're going from res, ah, we're going residential agriculture.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson of District One, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. This passed. Congratulations to both of you, and we're glad to have you in Lincoln County. And if there's anything that we can do, always feel free to call on us, okay? Y'all welcome to stay. We'd love for you to stay, but if you leave, we understand that, too. Thank you, y'all. All right, the next item is item eight, Rapid SOS Platform. Our nine-one-one director, Director Akok, if she would come and take care of this.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. You have my Rapid SOS proposal, and I'm asking for your approval to incorporate that product into the Communications Department. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we're very familiar with it. Is there a motion to give me the approval to sign, the authority to sign this contract?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion?
I've got one question.
Got a question, Mr. Clyde.
Uh, Greg, they got, this is no cost to the county, if I understand right.
No cost to the county.
No. They're supposed to help us, uh, you want to explain that? That might be pretty interesting about if somebody calls nine-one-one from a cell phone.
Yeah, it's a web-based program that we would incorporate into our computer system that will give us instant access to callers' locations before the nine-one-one line rings.
This could be real helpful, though.
Yes, it'll be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate y'all working on this and getting it to us and bringing it to us. If you got a motion or a second, all in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. I do want to tell y'all that she's being excused, because today is her forty-fifth, I wasn't supposed to say that. Today is her birthday. And she wanted to get out and go eat dinner at night with some of her family, so you're welcome to leave. Thank you for all you do. Item nine is tasers with the Sheriff's Department Sergeant Amos. We're familiar with this one, too, but you can tell us a little bit about it to the listening public, well, now.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having me. My first time. Appreciate it. You guys already have the quote for Max on regarding the additional four tasers and the four left-handed holsters the Sheriff's Office is requesting to have. I have spoken to the sheriff himself, and at the recommendation of the chairman, the Sheriff's Office is going to go ahead and pay that first sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars, whatever it is, upfront, and then have the rest of it rolled in with the other budget for the upcoming year or so. And I'll have to take any questions if y'all have any.
Okay, this is for four more tasers for the Sheriff's Department. The cost of it's eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. The company that does it finances for us zero percent interest over the next five years, and the payment is one thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents. That will come from the Sheriff's Jail Fee Fund.
That's correct.
On the first one, the next four years will come back into the budget session next year for us to place the last four payments in the budget.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion that we purchase this and pay it out the jail fund fee? Sixteen ninety-two eighty-one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Thank you, Sergeant.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome to leave, too, if you want to. You're welcome to stay if you want to.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I bet you do.
We haven't had many rooms get out.
Item ten on the agenda is the Public Works Director appointment. Y'all have all met. Director Randy Fisher is what he would be. He's with Columbia County for seventeen years, I think, working in all different areas of planning and zoning and all those things he did over in Columbia County. Highly recommended to us. I talked to Commissioner Gary Richardson today, and he's, he very defied the fact of what you said about yourself. He was a good fellow. Anyway, y'all met him last week at the work session. You know him, you read his resume, and you talked with him, and I'd like to recommend that Randy Fisher be appointed as the Public Direct, Public Works Director for Lincoln County. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, I mean Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Director Fisher, you have a unanimous vote. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. One thing I want to say, though, and I'm not going to hit this nail hard, I hit it all the time, but I do want, once again, and maybe this will be the last time, I want us to all, when you see a thing, Stephanie Aker, who's our planning, the Planning Department, came in, kept ship floating for the last four or five weeks, done extremely well a job. I might be proud of it. She's an asset to Lincoln County and to our planning and zoning Public Works Department. And I think Mr. Fisher's found that out in his joint tenure being around. You're going to have to come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the unanimous vote. It's been seventeen years in Columbia County Engineering. I have a civil design background. I worked with just about every facet of road construction, just civil infrastructure, water, utility, gas, sanitary, just about anything that goes in the ground. At some point, I even looked at it or did it. But again, thank you for the opportunity to come and serve the citizens here in Lincoln County, and I will give you my best ever to be so.
Mr. Clyde?
I was just saying, and Red Fish, you already resident of Lincoln County, but you can we?
Yes, sir.
I'm so creeped out, so creeped, brother.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
He's in the best district.
Not really.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item eleven is Verizon Tower Lease Agreement, Director Brun.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this has been a long fought, fought, fought battle, kind of, to bring this contract to the board. Proud to say that after over a year and a half work, we've got a contract that Mr. Ben says is solid, and it's for co-location of Selco, better known as Verizon, on Graves Mountain Tower Number Two. We discussed this in the work session. It will not only help cell coverage, but it'll also put money in the coffers of the county. I'm requesting a motion to allow the chairman to sign this contract and move forward with co-location of Verizon Wireless on Tower Two at Graves Mountain.
Okay, I think we all familiar with it, it was discussed for a while at our work session last week. I ask for a motion to approve the agreement and give me the authority to sign the lease agreement on behalf of Lincoln County with Cell Lo partnership doing businesses Verizon Wireless in Lincoln County. Is our motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion?
It's going to be a net income of twenty-four thousand dollars for the county?
Yes, there'll be initial five thousand upfront, and then in January, they'll pay, the rent's thirty-four, I'm sorry, thirty thousand, but then there is an obligation to Southern Company for five hundred a month for making it.
Six thousand dollars.
Which is six thousand dollars.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Next item is Vector Solutions Agreement, Director Brun.
Yes, sir. Vector Solutions is a company that allows us to, has a training platform for our firefighters and EMTs to fulfill their recertification obligations from year to year. It's an online program. We're able to track their progress, assign assignments in training, which is really important, because if we see a person who needs an area, needs improvement in a certain area, then we can assign training through that, and I think it's something that's going to help us keep up with our recertification as well as direct training.
This one, too, we have looked at and discussed in the work session. We're very familiar with it. Thank you, Director Brun, for bringing this to us. I think it'll be an important tool, even with newer people as we go down the road. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with Target Solutions amount of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? Give me the authority to sign. Is our motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Thank you, Director Brun. Intergovernmental agreement with DNR, Director Doss, he's not here. Thank goodness we discussed this a good bit at the work session. We all know what it is. It's given the, and it's all done according pretty much to state law, but it gives the Elijah Clark State Park through the Department of Natural, Georgia Department of Natural Resources and Lincoln County, the intergovernmental agreement that gives them five percent, which is all of the hotel motax that's generated from the cabins out of Elijah Clark State Park. It's really something we've been doing anyway. We're cleaning up the agreement with them is what it is. So is our motion that we adopt the intergovernmental agreement between Lincoln County Department of Natural Resources?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item fourteen, tiny house mortuary. This has been discussed with the county attorney. He's drawn it up. What we are doing tonight is we are voting on a motion to put place a mortuary on, well, it's got a different word for it, but that's what it means. Put the mortuary on tiny houses in the county. Let me say before we call it to a vote that I don't think any of us are opposed to tiny homes. What we are opposed to is tiny homes being placed just anywhere in the county. We would like to see like a tiny home community. Could be an existing subdivision that maybe doesn't have any or has a section that they would like to make a tiny home community out of. We don't know exactly what we'll do. That's the reason we put the mortuary on it. We know that we've had several in the last couple of months moved in that we didn't know anything about until, until code enforcement or somebody called in and complained that they were in. So this mortuary will not allow any to move in. We have at least a hundred and eighty days, hopefully less than that, to have our attorney to work with the people, with the attorneys in Cartersville that draws up all of our ordinances, and then this will come back to a vote of some kind of way of what we'll do, no later than a hundred and eighty days. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, Chairman, that's correct.
Okay, we all, I think we all know what we're voting on, so I'll ask for a motion that we place this mortuary into effect, which will come effective after we make this vote. Is our motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Director Fisher, you can get a copy of this from the clerk in the morning. If you don't have one, you might have one in your book. Notify your staff, all of them, top to bottom, that this mortuary is on, and we'll be watching it closely as we proceed with the, with the. we'll be watching it closely as, as we proceed with the, with an ordinance on how this should work for the county. Item fifteen, I do know that people look at the website and look at the agenda, because I've had a lot of calls, I'm sure y'all have too since this thing went on. Briefly, let me just state that in February of this year, we amended or redone or whatever you want to call it, our ordinance has been on the books for dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs since the late nineteen eighties, which is something that the state passed back then that we all had to do. We had complaints of, of animals more of a nuisance, barking and running loose in yards and this, this type of thing, and, and several people knocked down by dogs or attacked it by dogs, is what brought it back up in February. That ordinance is in place, but it's not in the ordinance book as written, it is at Mini Code who twice a year puts our ordinances together for our books, and I look for that to happen just in the next few weeks, they probably do January to June and July to December, but, but we do have copies of it. We have not appointed an, uh, animal control board, which the ordinance requires us to do, that each commissioner will appoint a member from within their district, and the chairman will appoint someone anyway inside of Lincoln County. It also says in that, when it was passed in February, that the Board of Commissioners was animal control board until we appointed one. I know several of you have had calls, because you've called me about it, and I've had two or three a day, people wanting to be on the board and who, who they recommended. This is a very serious board, some people did think maybe it is, but if you read the ordinance and see what the responsibility is of the board, it really has nothing to do with adoption of animals at all, that's not even mentioned in here, it does have something to say about stray dogs, mistreated animals, dangerous potential laters, dogs, et cetera. Um, personally, I have any, I have no problem with a member of Lincoln County Paws being on the board, a member, I don't think we need to have all five of our members represented, but I think we oughtn't, that's up to each one of you, is who you appoint, but, but it's not for the adoption of dogs or animals. But they should have a seat, I think, maybe at the table, so bear that in mind, I know we're not appointing tonight, I know some of you are working on some appointments, um, just bear in mind and, and tell them, if, I, I've already asked the clerk to make copies of this full ordinances together, that we can give out to who thinks they might want to serve, or who you're planning to appoint, that where they can realize before they accept this next month, that they, what their duties are going to be. Also says that they can meet at any time they have problems, but they have to meet at least six times a year, that's what our ordinance says. So, it, um, don't think that it's just for the adoption of dogs or animals, any, any animal, not just dog, we all like to say dogs, but it's any animal. This, this could get into, um, animal control, it's, it's, it's the high and full-time person for animal control, it could get into building a shelter, and it could get into a whole, whole lot of money. I've already estimated, they said it would probably be about two mils of tax, about eight hundred thousand dollars to begin building the building and, and putting somebody in, that would not be a continuation expenditure of that much, but you would have to have full-time employees when you go putting in a, uh, let me reframe from, full-time, might not be full-time, it's got to be every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, somebody's got to feed them, water them, clean it up, et cetera. So, you're going to have, it's an advisory-type board, but they're going to advise us as to how we, what we need to do. So we need to have a balance of people, of these five people serving that board, there's business people, taxpayers, and, and to help guide us as to what we need to do with the animal situation in Lincoln County. I said many years ago, at some point, all that's probably going to happen. Y'all know, and I'm more or less talking to the camera, but we've asked Columbia County, McDeffy County, they've had all the problems they wanted over there, they don't want ours in Wilkes County, about housing some of our places. They all at full capacity and can't take anymore animals, so, you know, once you get into the, the high, the, the impound in these animals, you're going to have, you're going to have veterinary expenses, um, you're going to have some people that, vets going to have to euthanize these animals, and you're going to have some people that don't like that either. So I'm just telling you, it is a real serious board, and it needs real serious people on this board. With that said, we try to, I hope that each one of you will have an appointment by next month, and I'll try to have mine too, because I don't have one yet either. So with that said, we, we are not appointing the board tonight, but I hope we can appoint at least three of the five where they can go ahead and get started, and who don't appoint one to serve in that mission until they get one appointed. Once that board is appointed, then I plan to meet with the five of them, along with the county attorney, to explain exactly, uh, what their duties are going to be. So with that said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is our second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankley, any conversation about it, if not, we stand adjourned. We got a unanimous vote on that, clerk.